All right. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone here to the February fifteenth, Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And if Mr. Slade would give us the indication.
Well, God, as always, we come before you first and foremost to invoke your blessing upon our time together today, to welcome you to this place, Father. Thank you for being here with your Spirit. Help us, Lord, to feel very real sense of the peace that Christ has all understanding that He gives to us. Thank you, boy, that you're going to give these men wisdom and discernment today, that, Father, that they need that wisdom that comes from on high, not the wisdom of man. Father, I pray that as they consider the decisions, that they would keep in mind all of the citizens of our county, Father, that they would mold and shape the decisions so that they are in the best interest of all of our citizens. Father, we would be remiss if we didn't thank you for how you protect us. And you use men and women who are committed, Lord, to law enforcement, to emergency operations, and they sacrificed themselves, their safety, their families, Lord, so that they might protect us. Would you bless them? Bring them home safely to their families and Christ's sake.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. First, on the agenda today, we have public comments, and the first one on the list is Trace Daniels. Tracy Daniels. Please come forward. Yeah, come forward and just state your name and your address.
Yeah, my name is Tracy Daniels, and my address is two oh five Stone Castle Drive, and it's in Castle Woods, Brandon, three nine oh four seven. I have a, um, a, a public drain that, um, if anybody's familiar with Castle Woods, where the church is, I'm directly across the street, not the boulevard, but the side street from the church. So all the water comes down off the hill and under the road and down my property line, under my driveway, to the back of my property, and exits out to the cul-de-sac behind me. So this drain, I guess over time, has just eroded, and my driveway's cracking all up, and I've got sinkholes, and I don't know what else to do. I mean, I need to see if I can get somebody to, to look at it and help me out with it, or tell me, you know, what I can do, what I can't do. Um, I'm just thinking that to, to, to repair this, it's going to be way more money than I'm going to be able to, to, to handle, so.
Yeah, Mr. Daniels, let me tell you about, one thing on it. We've got, uh, we've got a work order in on it right now to come out and take a look at. We've got some pictures of it already, and we see right there where, um, if you're coming off Stone Castle into your driveway, that little, I'm just gonna say from coming into the driveway on the right side below it, where it's watching out on that side. So we've got a work order. Our crews are gonna come take a look at it on that same point. It's in the right-of-way area. It could be the way we just need to shore up around that area, inside the right-of-way or not. Our road manager's gonna come out. He's got, we've got pictures of it. We've already seen it. We know right where it's at, and we're gonna come look at it. So anything we can do legally to help you inside the scope of it, we're gonna do. But we'll be able to give you some advice on what we can do or we can't do once they get out there. So the good-looking guy in that slick shirt over there, Mike, raise your hand. He's got a haircut. So that's our, that's our road manager. Right? So he's gonna come out. And I know we've got a work order pending on it right now. So he's gonna come out and reach out to you.
Is there, okay, so he'll let me know when they're coming out there, because I want to be sure to be there.
Yeah, and I think you can maybe just set that up, and maybe just give him, give him your telephone number before you leave, and when they come out there and do it, they'll take a, they'll get you out there, and you can have a conversation on it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, bud.
Next, on public comments, we got Ernest, Mr. Ernest Ledbetter. If you don't mind, Mr. Ernest, just state your name. Come on up here to the front. State your name.
One ninety-eight Hall Drive, Brandon, um, in August of twenty twenty-one, and I don't know if I'm at the right place or not, but people told me to come here, because I've been everywhere else and talked to people all over the state. But in twenty twenty-one, we, uh, my wife and I traded vehicles, and, uh, we turned in the license plate or tag over it here, left it laying on the counter. In August of twenty twenty-two, I started getting toll tickets from New York, New Jersey, and Delaware. I brought the tickets back here and talked to the tax collector, uh, Ms. Caroline there, and, um, and I haven't really got any help, uh, to stop this, and, and I've got right now fifty-three toll tickets, anywhere from one on them to twenty-seven on them, and they're totaling up to over six thousand dollars, and they have turned it over to three different collecting agencies. And I've been told that it was taken care of, didn't have to worry about it anymore. I got three more day before yesterday from the toll people, not the collectors. So I'm getting it from collectors and toll people, and I asked, "Where do the tags go when we leave them?" And I was told by the tax collector that a man picks them up. And I said, "Okay, who is the man, and what is his phone number?" And I'd like to look at her and say that she told me.
Sir, if you would, please.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'll be glad to. She told me it would be wrong if she told me. That's when I had about twenty-six pages. It would be wrong for her to tell me who picks them up. And I have talked to people all over the state, from South Haven to the coast, and from Meridian to the river. I've talked to other tax collectors. They tell me the first thing that should have been done, law enforcement up there should have been notified, red-flag the tag, and it would have been picked up. They tell me it's not in my name anymore. Ernest Ledbetter, one ninety-eight Hall Drive, gets these tickets every time I go to the mailbox just about. So all I'm doing is asking anybody in here that knows, got any suggestions on what to do. I'd like it to be taken care of.
Well, what we're gonna do is, from, I think, appreciate you making us aware of what's going on, but I think from here on out, we're gonna have some kind of system in place to where we can destroy these, melt these old tags down, and, and, don't you agree, Craig?
Well, that's not helping me, though. I'm asking for help for myself, and I, I, I don't want anybody else to have to go through this.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking our attorney has reached out to the folks in the other state and made them aware of what's going on.
That's right, and told me that they wasn't going to, uh, it was over. I wasn't gonna have to worry about it anymore. But also, I didn't come up here one day for him to, to meet me out there, my wife and I. I came because I had been told when I get more things from people, toll places, collectors, bring it up here. Well, Ms. Caroline and Stacy, I think her name is, wasn't here, and he happened to come out, and he gave me some papers, because he knew that I had talked to him. And they're dated the day he told me I, they, they had been trying to help me. The papers that he gave me was dated the day that we came up here, evidently that morning. So I guess they were notified that I was still wanting something done. They'd been telling me they'd been doing stuff, but the papers were dated that day. So they did it that morning or before my wife and I came up, that day. They hadn't been doing it before then. They did it that day.
Okay, all right.
So I, I got, I got names, numbers of everybody I've talked to. Highway Patrol talked to a guy. He said, "County, county, sheriff department." I tried to call Mr. Bailey numerous times, left my name, number. He never called me back. He put me in touch with another man, and he was gonna notify me when something happened. He gonna keep me notified. I called him one day, and I said, "Can you tell me what you've done?" He said, "Well, every time you call, we're trying to help you." I said, "Well, sir, what have you done?" He said, "I walked over there one day, and one of the ladies was on the phone, and she was on hold, and I think it was pertaining to your situation." And I said, "So you haven't done anything." And he acted like that. Maybe upset him, because I said he hadn't done anything. Now, he probably did wear a little bit of his shoe soles out walking from over there to here, but he hadn't done anything, except see that she was on the phone on hold. So that's the kind of treatment I've been getting.
Well, I apologize, and I wish we, hopefully, we can get this resolved for you, and, uh...
Well, you need to see any of it. I got, I got notes on everything.
Oh, I believe you.
I see it.
Everybody I've called. I've got all of these tickets here. I got all of these tickets that I've been getting, and I've got three more day before yesterday.
I don't believe nobody's gonna come and lock you up for not paying the ticket.
How long, how long is, uh, this tag? So how long has it been out there? Is it about to expire?
It was expired two months. It was expired two months, and I was also told that it may not be my tag. It may be a duplicate. Well, one of the nice ladies from the toll place said, "I got a real plain picture of it," and the little, I said, "What does the little sticker on the right bottom say?" And she said, "Ten of twenty-one. It expired," and they've still been using it. And from what I understand, the other law enforcement people not here have been telling me it should have been red-flagged, the first tickets I brought up here, and it would have been sobbed, just like an Amber Alert or something. They put the tag out there. The law enforcement will watch for that tag and pick it up. And that, if, if that's been done, it hasn't been done too many days, because I'm still getting tickets.
Right. Bizarre thing I've heard. I've never heard that before. I mean, I, I know you need some help. I agree with you.
I'm, I'm sick and tired of it. My heart works at twenty percent right now, and stress is the worst thing on it, according to Dr. Mike McMullin.
Well, I, I agree with you.
And so I'm, I'm sick of it, and I'd like somebody in this friggin' county to help me. I've been paying taxes here since I moved from Memphis in nineteen seventy-four, Rankin County.
All right.
And I, I appreciate y'all listening, because I'm going to talk anywhere I can until I get it.
First I've ever heard of it, and then first I've ever heard a case like that. So thank you.
Well, nobody here, people here, I, I'm gonna just tell you another thing, and I'm gonna sit myself down and let somebody got something important to say. I was told by two businessmen that I have known ever since I moved down here, "You are looking at Rankin County, a bunch of good old boys. You ain't gonna get nothing done here."
That's not...
And that kinda embarrassed me, because I've been in Rankin County ever since I moved down here.
Well, then you knew better then. You knew better. We're not good old boys. We're gonna try to help you.
Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry I took up so much of your time.
All right. I think it's, that's everybody that I had on my list on public comments, um, old business, minutes approved for February sixth. Motion made by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Consider agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Bishop, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion cured. Ms. Caroline Gilbert. Good morning.
All right. Item A, I have petition for change of assessment on twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two real property.
Motion approved.
I'll second that myself. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All, all opposed, like sign. Motion cured.
Item B, authority to void the tax sale and reversal of a supplemental chargeback for PPIN eighty-two three sixty-six. The chargeback was satisfied through the Department of Revenue, and we need to issue a refund check in the amount of four thirty-four thirty-four.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Mr. Morrison, any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion cured. Thank you, Ms. Caroline. Mr. Mike Harrison, road manager.
Morning.
Morning, sir.
Uh, request approval of Comcast utility on South Pearson, Monterey, and Evernizer for Comcast. Mr. Moore.
Motion approved.
Second. All right. Motion made by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion cured.
Greg, I'm gonna lean on you on AT&amp;T. Do we still need to do what we...
Just, just as a precaution, please. So your, your motion to approve this, should you choose to approve it, would be contingent upon AT&amp;T's understanding that they're waiving any claims at the county, against the county that they may claim they have.
Yeah, I'll make that motion for B and C combined, but I do want to add one thing on, uh, the Bay Point side of that. The part that, that gives me just a slight heart murmur is that we just paved Bay Point subdivision with new asphalt. And I'm not exactly sure, it says Bay Point subdivision, but I'm not exactly sure if this is that back section of it, which we just laid new asphalt in, that I do not want the asphalt tore up, like it's happened to me. Like, the, the one that comes to my mind, when we came in, we paved Palisades. We came in, we put quarter million dollars worth of asphalt in Palisades subdivision. Not long after that, they come right back behind us and install fiber. They tear up the roadway. They cut water lines. They never patched it back the way it was, and we ended up having to come back and fix those spots. So here we go in the Bay Point, where we've just spent a good chunk of money putting new roads in that subdivision. And now here comes AT&amp;T. I just, I just...
Why don't we do this? Why don't we put a contingency on, on B and C, 'cause B is gonna be Fox Bay. That we're gonna be paving. I don't know when they're gonna get in there and do this, that if they do any damage to the roads, that they'll be responsible.
I just, I just need them to be cautious of that. I know Bay, Bay Point's done. Fox Bay's coming up in the next six. I, I don't need them running roughshod over me in those two areas.
Any damage to any of the public roads will be repaired at AT&amp;T's expense.
No, so that'll be my motion.
That's your motion?
B and C, yeah.
All right. I'll second that motion. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion cured.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Tim Parker.
Morning.
Good morning.
We have one item, Mr. President. It's on Gunner Road Improvements Phase One. We recommend an approval of payout number five to Hemp Hill Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of forty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty cents, and authority to issue that check.
Motion approved.
And motion, Mr. Morrison, I have to second.
Second.
Second. Mr. Bishop, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion cured.
Hey, hey, hold tight, Mr. Parker. Well, I got you here. And we're, we're on, since we're talking about Gunner Road, a few things I want to mention, if you're all right with that. But I can do it during additional business, but I can do it right now. But I want to talk about some of my concerns that's going on down on the Gunner Road project down there. So the quick history of this thing, just to be sure everybody's on the same side of it. I've tried to do my research on this project, and it's, it's getting out of control in my mind. We originally started this thing in nineteen or twenty, to where it was about a four-point-six million dollar project. Somehow, on this whole Gunner Road project, we got into a problem with water lines and some issues that arise, that arose down in that area in dealing with relocation of water lines or, or things that were going on on Gunner Road. So we continued to drive on, and we get to a point to where we get into litigation with the Water Association down in the Gunner Road area. Then we turn into the point where we're gonna break this thing down into phases, and we get into a Phase One project of it. So we come through, we bid that out. That's in the neighborhood of three million dollars. On the original mindset that this is a four-point-six million dollar Gunner Road project down there. So we award Phase One, and I think that was a mistake, because we awarded it knowing that we're gonna have to come back and bid back Phase Two. So last week, we come back into the situation, and we get bids come back in, in the five-and-a-half million dollar range. So now that we get to a point to where we take a four-million-dollar project, we mismanaged the heck out of it. We get in litigation with the Water Association down there, and now we're pushing ten million dollars on the whole thing. The problem is now, we're gonna have to go back and find three-and-a-half to four million dollars to finish Phase Two if we award that Phase Two project. The worst part about the whole deal is now we're in litigation, and we spent a hundred thousand dollars so far on litigation against the Water Association to try to recoup some of the money that we've overshot the project for. Now, I get the argument is, everything's gone up, and it's more expensive than it was yesterday. The problem is, the revenue coming back in hadn't gone back up. So now we're totally outside the scope of this thing. So here's my discussion, and here's my fault, and I don't know if I need to add it to the agenda first, but, and I think I do, I need to add it to the agenda. I'm gonna make a motion to add this to the agenda, to take a vote on, but to terminate this Phase Two section, this project, kill the litigation of it, finish Phase One, pay it all out, and be done with the, the craziness that's going down, uh, on this Gunner Road project. So I'm gonna make a motion to add that to the agenda and, uh, see where I can go from there. So, Mr. Calhoun, I'm gonna make a motion to add it to the agenda on termination of the Gunner Road Improvement Project and termination of the lawsuit against the Water Association, uh, in South Rankin County. That's my motion.
That's your motion. Do I have a second?
I think this is probably a time that Keith and all of us need to look at where we're at. I, it's not in my district, but, and I wasn't aware of it, because we are gonna have to come up with money, and you, and Keith, and board, we need to find that money.
We're, we're gonna have to find three-point-six million. Hey, we're gonna have to find three-point-six million dollars to finish the project.
And let me say this, on the estimating side. We, on, the one we just bid, we used current prices on Phase One, or estimate. And there are things in Phase Two that aren't in Phase One, some curb and gutters and things like that, and we're, uh...
What was our estimate?
Ours was three-point-seven-seven-five, and they came in at five-point-five.
It, it just...
Excuse me, no, excuse me. That's, three-seven-seven-five is just on the roadway section, and that part came in at, uh, five million, oh fifty-two. Uh, the total came in at, uh, five-point-five, and we were four. So we're, we're using prices that are current out there now, and we haven't seen any asphalt or anything go crazy since Phase One was bid.
Bishop, we went down to a point where it was gonna cost about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to move a water line. Now we're at five-fifty to move a water line.
Because of the...
Because of, because of the timeframe and all this kind of stuff like that, so...
I don't think we want to get into that part. Uh, you're, you're right, it went two-fifty, but there's a lot of reasons. I'm not sure if we need to talk about that right now.
Yeah, y'all can talk about this in executive because of the litigation against the Water Association. If you choose to do so. You don't have to. You don't have to go into executive.
And I guess, I guess that's my biggest problem with the whole situation, is that now that we've overshot our target of four-point-six million dollars, and we're touching ten million dollars, we spent a hundred grand in litigation of it, and we're, we're suing the Water Association with the points of recouping some of the money that we've misspent.
No.
And that's, that's, well, that's what's happening. How is it not?
I have a case to talk about that right now, if it can be in litigation.
I just think, I think it's a bad idea, because right now, we're fixing to have to find...
We'll talk about it. We'll talk about it. We need to talk about this probably in executive session.
Well, regardless, we gotta find three-point-six million dollars.
We'll talk about it in executive session.
Well, I mean, that's, I don't know that finding three-point-six million dollars is the route for executive assessment, but...
We're gonna talk about this in executive session.
Well, the, the litigation clearly is in executive session, or should the board choose to go into that discussion.
All right, so, all right, so, all right, so from that same point, we'll talk about the litigation there. But the other issue is that the bid came back at five-point-whatever million dollars. We've got an extra million dollars that's still there in, in the bond to apply to it. We've picked up another seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in legislative money to add to it. Now we're upside down, three-point-six or change, or three-point-eight million dollars into this project, that we're gonna have to find from somewhere. So somebody's gonna have to make a decision, unless we stop this craziness, on where we're gonna pull three-point-seven million dollars at. I, I just think it's, I think it's, it's a bad decision.
Well, this was news to me. I didn't know that, uh, our numbers were so far off.
Well, that's something we are gonna discuss.
And that's, that's the other part, too.
That part we're gonna discuss.
You have to go in and do the research of it, because we're not getting all the facts up front. That's the part that drives me insane on this situation.
I don't think you, you don't have your facts all together.
I've, I've got them clear from our, from our group.
No, you ain't got your facts.
Well, and we got some problems with our administration, and our administration don't have the facts, so...
You ain't got all the facts.
Well, let's get them straight.
That's right.
All right, so we don't have a second for the motion to add, so let's, let's move forward. Mr. Craig, Slade.
Looks like the first, uh, three items are gonna be to set a public hearing for those matters that you see there. Those are nuisance considerations, gentlemen.
All right. I'll make a motion to add A, B, and C. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion cured.
Gentlemen, we've got, it looks like six public hearings before us today, so we'll go ahead and get started. On the first one, this is a public hearing for Brittany Everett, a conditional use permit request at five fifty-three Rose Hill Road. This is District Three property. We'll open that public hearing. Ms. Everett is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a personal care home at five fifty-three Rose Hill Road. She owns a home that is located on a point-one-five acre parcel. Ms. Everett, uh, has acquired an additional point-eight-five acres that will be combined with the point-one-five acre. Uh, the property's on A two. Personal care home may, may house up to three residents. Uh, licensure is not required by the State Department of Health for three or less residents. Uh, residents may have functional or physical impairments, such as cognitive limitations, and/or they may be unable to complete daily activities of living. The home will operate twenty-four hours a day and will always require one staff member to be present. The home meets ADA requirements. At this time, we'll open that public hearing. It, it's already open. Uh, and we will, I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Brittany Everett conditional use permit. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on this matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. Uh, your staff has put together conditions that the board can consider. Uh, with your permission, I'd like to review those.
Please do.
Um, uh, the maximum, obviously, will be three residents. Uh, the, uh, the facility will be required to have a qualified care provider on site twenty-four hours a day. All direct care providers must be eighteen years of age and have verification that they are not listed on the Mississippi Nurses Aid Abuse Registry. Uh, they, this is the third one. They will, uh, this applicant will require proof of a criminal history background check for each care provider employed. Uh, the applicant will be required to maintain records and make those records available to the county upon reasonable request at any point in time, uh, to see to it that each of these conditions is being carried out, uh, and the applicant will be prohibited from placing any signage on the property at all advertising that it is a personal care home. So those would be the conditions that the staff would recommend. I will leave it to the board to decide which of those, if any, should not be included.
Does, uh, Ms. Brittany Everett, does that seem fair to you?
Yes, it does.
Okay, all right. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion cured.
Thank you, Mr. President. That, that hearing is closed. Uh, the next item before you is the Joseph Scott Stewart conditional use permit at seven thirty-five A Highway four sixty-eight. This is District Three property. We'll open that public hearing. Mr. Scott, I'm sorry, Mr. Stewart is seeking a conditional use permit to open a commercial, commercial drop-off site for catalytic converters and other regulated metals from businesses that provide proof of where their products came from. This is a two-point-seven-seven acre parcel that's zoned A one. The business will operate in an existing metal building at seven thirty-five A Highway four sixty-eight. Mr. Stewart purchases catalytic converters, uh, wheel rims, and copper from scrapyards and recycling centers and muffler shops and junkyards. He uses a, a product, an online product called Leads Online, to report transaction, which can be viewed by law enforcement agencies. Everything that he collects will be stored inside the building. Proposed hours of operation are eight AM to four PM, two or three days a week. Mr. Stewart is proposing placement of a business sign at the end of the driveway. Renee, do we have conditions on this one?
Yes.
Very good. All right. At this time, I, I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Joseph Scott Stewart conditional use permit request. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. Uh, let me, if, if I may, Mr. President, give you the, the staff's recommended conditions for this applicant. No unregulated or undocumented transactions of any kind. Number two, full and complete cooperation with all law enforcement agencies with respect to with respect to transaction histories, customers, and document, documents. So full, complete cooperation, access to all the documents for law enforcement. Number three, installation of a 24-hour surveillance cameras on site sufficient to clearly identify vehicles and vehicle tag information for all vehicles entering or exiting the property, and to identify the date and time of that access. I think the applicant's already in compliance with that, but that would be a condition that we would require. Number four, adequate notification signage at the point of entry, alerting anyone entering that there is 24-hour video surveillance. And so those would be the conditions that's recommended by the staff.
All right, Mr. Stewart, you good with that one?
Yes, sir. All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item is a public hearing with Tyler Brown, conditional use permit at 120 Longridge. This is a District One property. Give me just a second here. We'll open that public hearing. Mr. Brown is seeking a conditional use permit to construct a pole barn with living quarters at 120 Longridge. This is a 15.25 acre parcel. Property is zoned RE1. The structure will have a metal exterior. The living quarters will be 954 square feet, heated and cooled. He stated in the application that this is a temporary dwelling. A, a permanent dwelling will be built on the property within five years. At this time, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Tyler Brown conditional use permit? Is anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on this matter. There are a couple of conditions that I would like to address with the board concerning Mr. Brown's request. Number one, the barn with living quarters is a temporary dwelling. A permanent home must be constructed within five years from the date that the board grants the conditional use permit approval. Number two, when the permanent home is completed, a change of occupancy permit will be required. The applicant will need to submit a request for a change of occupancy permit to convert the current temporary quarters back to a barn by removing one of these three items, the bedroom, the bath, or the kitchen. And so those would be the conditions that the staff would recommend concerning this request.
You good with that?
I've, I've had no phone calls, no problem, everything. I've had one phone call, and he was really just asking what the zoning was about. He's fine, so I, I make a motion to approve. Everybody seems to be fine.
Motion approved. Mr. Morrison, do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carried.
Next item, this will be item G, Mr. President. This is a public hearing for the Alton and Marie Crisman Dimensional Variants at 279 Garth Farm Road. This is a District Three property. This time, we'll open that hearing. Alton and Marie Crisman are seeking a dimensional variance for two lots that will be combined into one parcel at 279 Garth Farm Road. The two lots total .96 acres. This property is zoned A1. They are proposing the placement of a 2023 single-wide manufactured home on this property. There is an existing dilapidated home on the property on one of these lots. They will demolish the existing home after moving into the new home.
And this has been a nuisance issue for a couple. I know I've seen it twice, I think.
Yes, that's right. So, at this time, let me ask, Mr. President, with your permission, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the Alton and Marie Crisman conditional use permit request? Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. There's, there is one condition, if I may, Mr. President, relate that to you. This is proposed by the staff. Applicant will be required to completely remove the existing home from the property within six months from the date on which a permit is issued by Rankin County for installation of the 2023 model manufactured home. The applicant understands that no remnants of the existing home may remain on the property, and all debris must be completely removed. That would be the condition.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop, any further discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carried.
And, Mr. President, the next item under our agenda, on our agenda, is item H. This will be a public hearing on the Rehoboth Farm Growers' conditional use permit at 337 J.C. Prestige Road. This will be a District Four property. So let me walk you through that particular request. We'll open that public hearing. Rehoboth Farm Growers is seeking a conditional use permit for a cannabis cultivation facility at 337 J.C. Prestige Road. This is an 18.87 acre parcel. It's zoned A2. The Mississippi State Department of Health has issued a license for the facility. That was done on September the 22nd of 2022. This will be an owner-operator facility. The owner resides on the property. There will be no employees. Plants will be grown inside an existing 4,320-square-foot metal building with a polycarbonate roof. We are opening that public hearing. I'll ask at this time, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the Rehoboth Farm Growers' conditional use permit? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. I want to apologize ahead of time, because the conditions that are recommended by the staff are voluminous. And so we need to walk through that. This is our very first opportunity to consider a, a facility of this type under the industry of this type, and so we want to be sure that we get this right. I am indebted, we are indebted as a staff, to CNPD, who has worked in lockstep with us. This is a new day for Rankin County. It's, that, it is something that we have not had to deal with in the past, and so they have been instrumental in helping us to navigate the uncertainty of what we are now dealing with in Rankin County. And so I want to go over these conditions with you. I think this will be helpful. And in the future, my hope would be that we don't have to spend as much time going over these conditions. We will have done, we will have set in place what I think will be fairly uniform conditions for uses of this type. Number one, signage. No outdoor advertising signs may contain depictions of cannabis plants or cannabis products. This includes an image or visual representation of a cannabis leaf, plant, or the likeness thereof that explicitly suggests or represents a cannabis leaf or plant, or an image that indicates the presence of a product, such as smoke or other types of visuals of that nature. Nor may any signage be designed in any manner that would be especially appealing to children or other persons under 21 years of age. No more than one sign at each location. All medical cannabis establishments are subject to sign regulations as defined by Section 2609 of our ordinance, and all provisions for advertising and marketing set forth in the Mississippi Medical Cannabis Act of 2022. So both of those regulations are gonna be in play here. And all established criteria by the Mississippi State Department of Health as set forth in Title 15, Part 22, Subpart 3. No medical cannabis established may advertise or market on posted signage, which one, is enlarged so as to violate the provisions of our ordinance; number two, depicts cartoon or other imagery that would attract or appeal to minors; displays paraphernalia or the use of paraphernalia; is located in zones where medical cannabis establishments are unable to locate; is mobile or provide, provided through unsolicited leaflets, brochures, or handbills; is located on public transit, publicly owned property, or within 1,000 feet of a protected land use, this would be like a church, or a nursing home, or a daycare facility; is located off premises of the establishment; makes advertised claims which are not backed by research or science or in which sources can be used out of context; or depicts cannabis consumption or imagery of the cannabis plant, including bud and leaf imagery. That's the signage restrictions that your staff is recommending. Number two, byproducts. Cannabis byproducts or waste cannot be stored outside of the building. That's the second condition. The third condition, odor. Odor prevention plan and odor prevention plan to mitigate odor, odor from leaving the building must be submitted to the Office of Community Development. Hours of operation, we are, the staff is proposing Monday through Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., except dispensaries, so this is not a dispensary. Okay, so it would be Monday through Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Okay? Lighting. The applicant must demonstrate that no excessive light escapes to neighboring properties between sunset and sunrise. Next, security plans. A security system and security processes that include 24/7 parking lot surveillance capable of capturing tag information must be implemented. Loitering. No loitering of any kind is allowed on the premises. No, no unregulated personnel on the premises. So those would be, is that all of them on that one?
Yes.
Yeah, that is.
Craig, the only thing I see on, on the hours of operations, I mean, this is really a farming deal, and I mean, I don't know, I mean, it's a, Steve, this is his area. I mean, I don't know. I mean, if you farming inside of a building, and you're the only employee, and you're the owner, I mean, if something goes down, they have to go in after 7:00 p.m. at night. I mean, if we enforce this, I mean, it's, he won't be able to go in until the next morning.
Why don't we put in as far as deliveries go? You know?
Yeah, deliveries.
I think that's really more...
And a lot of production and delivery.
Yes, and we can clarify that. I think that's what is clearly indicated here. It would be outside traffic of any kind that's coming onto the premises needs to be regulated within that, those hours of operation. I, I think the applicant would, would be able to enter his own property and conduct any operations of any kind that he sees fit. It, it's that third-party entry that we're really trying to control there. So unless, you know, we, we can certainly make that clarification, gentlemen, to, to see to it that we're talking about third-party access to the property. Okay, do we good with that?
Do you have any questions? Don't you come up if you get...
Is that all the conditions?
That's all that we got.
Okay.
Of course, I know the state's got theirs.
Let me, so, my day job as an engineer...
Do what now?
State your name. Oh, Greg Aldrich, and I live at the, well, at the facility at 337 J.C. Prestige Road in Pillatchee. So, and I understand the decisions that we need to make here today. And I really like your, your comments are as far as access goes. What I found, when I'm making a decision, and I've made thousands of them, is make sure I got the proper perspective. There is, so, let me have a few minutes just to paint perspective on here. In addition to being licensed for a cannabis, a medical cannabis facility, I also have a USDA hemp producer's license. It allows me, if I wanted to, I could plant five acres of industrial hemp out there. I could fill that building up with CBD-producing cannabis plants. And I wouldn't be standing here today, because there's totally unregulated in Mississippi. Mississippi defers to USDA to regulate that whole industry.
The hemp side.
Right. So, as far as the impact to the community and everything, I could show you a, a plant that was authorized under the USDA permit and a plant that was authorized under the Medical Cannabis Act, and you cannot tell the difference. You cannot smell the difference. There was, there'd be no difference at all. The only way you can tell the difference is to test it for THC.
Right.
The hemp plant has to be under 3/10 of a percent of THC. So, that's, that's the impact to the facility.
So you're saying you wanting to grow hemp also along with the...
I don't, I don't, to be honest, I got, I pulled that permit after Initiative 65 was overturned as a Plan B. But the, the point I'm making is, I'm not doing anything more than I could already be doing as far as it would impact the county. I, I like the condition on the signs. I don't want anybody to know where I'm at, period. Anyway, for security reasons, I don't want people coming to look for my product. The only sign I got posted is one that says Rehoboth Farms, and it's got a wagon and a cross on it.
But they're gonna know, right? I mean, they'll know what, I mean, they'll know.
Unfortunately, yes, because the state has seen fit to publish the addresses of all the facilities.
And this is a public meeting, and it'll be in the paper. It's your head in the first farm in Rankin County, so...
But I don't, I don't want a public size. I don't want...
It's gonna be public size.
I don't want to advertise.
I guess.
Okay, don't, have no plan. So let's talk about advertising and what my market is. I, I have two customers. One, I can sell to dispensaries. Two, I can sell to other, to processors. None of my customers are allowed to come to my facility to pick up product. There's two entities that are allowed to come to my facility. One is a testing lab to come take samples, and one is a licensed transportation company.
That's right.
So the way this cycle runs, if I'm doing three crops a year, which is my plan, maybe if I can get four, that'd be great. So every quarter, or every three or four months, I'm gonna have vans come in and tell I get rid of my product, and that's it. It's, I know the law in, in the state is classified it as a facility, but you cannot be more incorrect in classifying this as no more than a farm that grows medical cannabis. And I, and it's, and it's no different than I would be if I was growing industrial hemp or CBD plants. I already, the state already makes me comply with most of the conditions up here, so I don't really have too many objections other than, you know, the hours of operations.
Right.
As far as public access, my, you know, I'm fine with that. In fact, you could limit it to like, you know, four months a year that I get to pick those months. So that's, I mean, that's how it is. I have, I've got video surveillance, so that's not a problem. The odor mitigation plan, um, there's different ways to grow this. One is in a sealed building. I've elected to, to use more of a greenhouse nursery-type method to grow my products, and there's odors that are going to escape, so... But my nearest neighbor is probably, I don't know, 1,000, 1,500 feet away, and I don't think the odor's gonna travel that. So that, I mean, that's probably gonna be my plan, is distance to mitigate it. And that's, that's, I guess that's kinda all I had to say. Nope, I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not a retail facility, it's a wholesale facility, just like if I was growing chickens or growing tomato plants or whatever.
All right, Steve, do you have any questions?
The road, um, you're, you're dry.
Right. It's in bad shape right now, because it's been raining a lot. It's in bad shape right now because it's been raining a lot.
Is, is there a drive that comes from J.C. Prestige to your property that's public, or?
No, it is, there's, there's an easement that picks up at J.C. Prestige, and it goes all the way basically to my residence. And then it tees off, where it tees off is actually on my property, but it's not really a public road.
It's a private drive.
It's a private drive. I don't own it, but I hold the easement for it. So that's kinda the condition of it.
Ask Mike, our road manager. Mike?
Yes?
Are you familiar with what, the road he's talking about, the drive? I mean, I know you're familiar with J.C. Prestige.
Yeah, I'm familiar with both sides of it. I think we was actually, excuse me, working yesterday in front of where the wagon wheel is, at Rehoboth Farms. I was seeing that side yesterday.
So from the entrance there, you go another three-tenths of a mile, and that's where the drive is. And probably, well, my house is 300 feet or so from, from the middle building, so three-tenths of a mile minus 300.
Steve, of course, you're concerned about being a private drive.
It's gonna be a private.
Yeah, we're not gonna maintain this.
Well, I don't want next year to be, hey, any joke about him.
Yeah.
And then I want to wait, he's gonna have on J.C. Prestige. It's probably gonna be like.
It's gonna be.
He said vans.
Yeah, vans. I think it's kinda been the biggest vehicle would be like.
I didn't.
I would tell them what we'd recommend was a ride for the truck, which would be 481. Harold Road on Rehoboth, that's gonna be the short end of the road.
Yeah.
Instead of driving all the way through Rehoboth, because it is not a very wide road.
But, but, I mean, we're not talking about 18-wheelers coming down this road. We're talking about maybe a.
The transportation.
Wells Fargo truck, maybe.
The transportation companies are, the ones that I've talked to and met with are these, it's not like a regular van, but picture these, I don't even know what the name of it, Mercedes makes, everybody makes them, they're big tall things.
Sprint van.
Four-wheel drive van.
Yeah.
Argos van.
Sort of like UPS.
Smaller than a.
Smaller than UPS.
Like a FedEx van or something.
And I can tell you, my wife is addicted to Amazon, and the UPS guy comes down my road just about every day, so.
Mine, too.
Right, Renee, we're confident the zoning is correct.
Yes, ma'am.
When I pull it up, it shows, then just on the landlot residential, but.
No, it's H2, it's agricultural.
Yeah, okay. That drive in a year from now is still gonna be a private drive.
Correct.
You understand?
I want it to be private.
Yeah, yeah, me, too.
I, I may, after the first or second crop, I may pave it, but I'm no, no, yeah.
And.
And at some point, I may put a gate across it, but.
With this being what it is, and the different requirements or conditions, I really would like to put something in there about subdividing. I don't want somebody to say, well, this is going pretty good, and I, land out here's gotten real valuable. I can put in five houses on my private drive and sell, you know, four, five acres, each 20 or two or three.
Absolutely.
And then we've got kids living there.
Let me, let me, I brought the site plan. Let me kinda, a picture's worth a thousand words. I, I do not own the property for about two-tenths of a mile for that drive, other than the easement. And I'm not sure where you're going, but I just want you, where you're going to be, where you think you're going. And so, so. Okay. Oh, great. Greg Aldrich.
Mr. Aldrich.
Yes.
Let me hold you, so that you can all see it.
Okay. So, that's, that is the drive in question. My property corner's like right there. So I own this parcel right here. My house is right there, and then where I've got the greenhouse is right there. So I'm not, there's no development along, unless my neighbor decides.
Unless the neighbor decides that he wants it.
Right, right.
How many acres is that?
Just sort of 19.
So they could maybe.
Oh, the neighbors?
Yeah, the neighbors.
I don't know, there's, I know there's.
What is the neighbors' act?
I've got a sheet that shows that.
Yeah.
It's, it's act, so we'll have to watch it ourselves.
Looking to make a suggestion, Steve, as a condition, would just be that the applicant, if the applicant intends to subdivide the, the subject property, he just simply has to communicate and receive permission back from the board supervisors. If he ever intends to subdivide, he just comes back to us with his subdivision plan. That could be an additional condition, right? One other condition that I thought of was, we would, and I think Mr. Aldrich is gonna do this as a matter of course, full and complete compliance with all state laws and regulations associated with the medical cannabis industry. That, that should be a standing condition that we have, that if, if the applicant ever gets in trouble with the state because of regulations, that puts him automatically in trouble with us, but I would propose that we do that as well. As far as the hours of operation issue, it sounds to me like now that we have better information, and I do appreciate Mr. Aldrich coming and helping to better educate us about this, again, this is our first out-of-the-box, so we're, we're learning as we go here as well. It would seem to me that the hours of operation piece of this, given the way that this is gonna be handled, could, could be, we, we could modify that so as to account for the fact that there may be no public access of any kind to this facility. And, and if there's no public access of any kind, we don't really need hours of operation. Does that make sense?
And by law, that's true.
Yeah.
I cannot, you have to have a work permit issued to you and be part of some other.
Yes.
You gotta have the right credentials to come over there.
The only people that can come in my facilities are, are basically the testing people.
They're, they're regulated already, so that, that is, that is not public access as we define that.
Right.
Okay? When you think about public access, you're, you're thinking about retail operations. This is where anybody, any resident can pull up, park, and come in and say, I just wanna look around. And, and that's not gonna happen because of the regulations are in place. I, I want you guys to understand that the conditions that are being put together are really designed to be uniform across the spectrum of the cannabis activities, and some of these are just not gonna fit when we get over into the grower side, but we need them because we will have other uses where they will fit. So this is a standard set of conditions that we're gonna work from, and then as we move forward and the individual condition, I'm sorry, the individual activities appear before us, like a grower, we can modify those kinda on the fly and pick and choose which should apply or not. I think the hours of operation is just simply not workable for any of us, and I don't want Ms. Renee's office to be saddled with the burden of trying to regulate something that's not enforceable. So I would say let's remove the hours of operation piece altogether, and we'll, we'll go forward with all the rest. Again, two additional conditions that have been discussed is, number one, no further subdividing of the applicants, of the subject property, the property subject to this application without board of supervisors authority, right? And full and complete compliance with all state laws or regulations associated with medical cannabis.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe Brad, and you can educate me. You had me really going off earlier when you said you could fill that up with some, it sounded like some big bad plants, if you wanted to.
No, 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 they're not bad, they're, so.
See, I'm scared today.
Cannabis, cannabis is, one, it grows wild. That's why they, the nickname is weed. I mean, man didn't make it.
Yes, sir.
You know, so if we got heartburn about it, you gotta talk to the good Lord about it. But, so.
I think his question is about.
So you got, you got cannabis, right?
Yeah, rattlesnakes grow wild, and we don't eat them.
We don't want them growing wild. That takes money out of my pocket, but, so you, but cannabis is the big, there's different kinds of cannabis plants. Some of them, so it's not the cannabis plant that's really illegal in itself. The THC in it is what is on the Schedule I controlled drug thing. So if you can grow cannabis according to the new federal law that has less than three-tenths of a percent of THC in, and people do it all over the country, that's where they get this, you can go in these grocery stores and buy CBD oil, that's where that comes from.
Out of, out of a hemp plant.
And it comes from a hemp plant, or, you know, there's new industrial applications that, you know, it's, the industry's kind of its infancy because it's, you know, the whole plant has been classified as illegal for so long, but now the federal government has said, yeah, you can grow cannabis as long as it doesn't have too much THC in it. So that doesn't make it a bad or a good plant, per se.
What does the state or local law say about that? Is it, they can follow the federal?
The state, Mississippi, for, for non-THC cannabis.
Or less than three.
Right.
Hundreds of a percent.
Their, Mississippi's, Mississippi defers to the USDA to regulate it. Some states have taken that over, states have an option, the way the bill was passed, states have an option, they either regulate it themselves or defer to the federal government. Mississippi has chosen to defer to the USDA to do that.
Yeah, Steve, I think he said that if he was gonna go with the hemp, which is less than that three-tenths of a percent of THC, that he wouldn't need to inter, interface with us, which is true.
That was whole, just so you could have a perspective of what the impact, so what I'm doing is already legal, what's, what's, well, it, it's all legal. Two years ago, what I'm doing would have been legal as long as the plants I was growing didn't have THC past a certain limit in it. And you couldn't tell the difference between what I was doing two years ago and what I'm doing today.
And that, you could grow that outside, the hemp plant could be grown outside.
I could have 10 acres planted in hemp, and, yeah.
Will you have a relationship with our local law enforcement?
I, I can't. I know the constable, he comes, has come out to my house a couple times.
What I wanted you to be able to pick the phone up and say, I've got some people that just drove up.
Right.
And, and I'm by myself here, I don't know who they are or where they're from, and they know who you are, our local law.
If you tell me the guy to reach out to, I will reach out to them and introduce myself.
Our sheriff's department would be great, just to have a relationship.
Absolutely.
To where, 'cause I, I suspect somebody is gonna try to get cute, maybe kids or whatever, and see what they can see.
And I really think, I mean, for your benefit, go ahead and put you a gate across your drive right there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just a couple thousand dollars right there, you can put you a nice gate.
If, if it weren't, if it weren't for my wife ordering so much stuff, I'd already done it.
Put you a drop box out there, like I'd do. I got a drop box where you can put your Amazon and UPS. I mean, that's, but that's your choice, so.
No, but I do, I do have plans for that. To be honest with you, you know, I've been, I haven't had, when I first bought the property, this place was used as a wedding venue, and more people in the county knew about it, and I'd have some people come out once in a while, you know, teenagers or something, once in a while, but I, I can't, since we closed it up and converted it, I think it's been a year. So I've got, I mean, before, on that drive, before you get to my property, I've got a motion sec.
Yeah.
Sensor that goes off. I've got video, I've got surveillance going down that road, all around my house, and then obviously at the facility also. So when that, when somebody comes down my driveway, I know them, and I get on the cameras. It's, I, I.
Keep them working.
It's right here.
I can tell you.
Yeah.
There's an app that, for just mushrooms, and in my district, real close to me, these young people from Jackson, in the middle of the night, go out and they hit these apps and trying to find the mushrooms, and they're generally gonna be in a cow pasture.
Right.
And anyhow, so they're gonna find you, it's just a matter of how brazen they are.
You just find there's an app that shows you where mushrooms are?
That's what I was, they call them.
Wow.
And they'll have a profile of mushrooms. Well, they got, the, the most likely places are gonna be cattle farms.
Is any more?
You do, you have your facility monitored, you know?
Correct, have to by state law. I can, I can pull it up and show it to you if you'd like.
No, that's not.
And it's certain.
Any more questions?
I didn't know.
All right, and do I have a motion to approve?
With the conditions as stated.
Motion.
Second. Our motion made by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, black side.
Nay.
All right, Mr. Rick, reflect, one nay. Mr. Cross. All right, next. Mr. President, the final item under public hearing today is a public hearing on the Kelly Williams conditional use permit at 1170 Old Fannin Road. It's a District Five property. We'll open that public hearing. Kelly Williams is seeking to rezone the property at 1170 Old Fannin Road from C2 to C3. This is a four-acre parcel. If the zoning change is approved, Ms. Williams is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a medical cannabis dispensary in the existing home on the property, and she plans to renovate the interior of the structure, paint the exterior, and replace the front door. So at this time, I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition of the rezoning request made by Kelly Williams concerning the property at 1170 Old Fannin Road. This will be from C2 to C3. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on the rezoning request. I'm gonna ask Ms. Williams and/or her counsel to come forward at this time, please, and what I want to do, to stress is that we have, the state law does require a specific level of proof with respect to a rezoning. As you, you got, we've gone through, over this many, many times in the past. In order to achieve a rezoning, the applicant must be able to establish that, one, there was an error in the original zoning classification, I don't believe that'll be in play here today, and, number two, they have to be able to demonstrate that there is a need for, a public need for the rezoning, and that, and that there is an underserved C3 component, which is what they want to go to. They need to be able to demonstrate that there is a need for that, okay? So that's what we will request of Ms. Williams and/or Ms. Flagard. Welcome.
Good morning. Just state your name and your address for the record.
Good morning, my name is Kelly Williams, and my address is 20912 Oaks Trace, Canton, Mississippi, 39046. I'm here today with my counsel.
And I'm Spence Flagard, F-L-A-T-G-A-R-D, and I live in Madison County, in Regisland, at 214 Silas Trace. Good to be before y'all, and it was interesting to hear the hearing before ours, and for the rezoning, it's on a busy thoroughfare, and Kelly will explain the nature of her business, and it was, it was helpful, too, to hear the, the good regulations that y'all have come up with. I know she intends to, as part of her plan, she intends to comply with all that, so I'll turn it over to her. Thanks.
Thank you. I will just, I will try not to take up too much of your time, but I would just like to share with you everything that's sort of on my mind. As it relates to the public need, I would just say, as I understand the county's requirements at this point, that should any medical marijuana dispensary be located in the county, that it would be required to be in a C3, I believe, and so it is on that basis that we are asking that the, for the rezoning. As it relates to an underserved, as I understand that term, and please correct me if I, if I haven't seen the ball set to kick off here, but as I understand that term, it would be that the community itself or the area at large is underserved with, with the, with medical marijuana. marijuana products available to Rankin County residents who are suffering with debilitating conditions. In that regard, I don't know of any other dispensary that's opened in Rankin County, and so I would submit to you all that it is an underserved area, and we would be grateful and proud to serve in that area. Just 10 seconds about me, just so you know who I am a little bit, if it matters. I'm a born and raised Mississippian. I've been here my whole life. I was educated here, and I've remained here. I have a mother, first and foremost, and a wife and a daughter. I have three children, and I have a brand-new granddaughter, and I have an 85-year-old mom that lives with me. This is all to say that family is very important to me. It's important to me to share with people that I would, I would never do anything, create anything, or produce anything that would be offensive to the ideals of family, or to children, or anything like that. And I always feel compelled to say that, and I think there are so many, I think it's a divisive issue, and it can be, even in a medicinal program, and so I wanted to share that with you. As far as Kelly's green goes, we have been working on this vision for several years. It was inspired in large part by my niece, who had Ewing's sarcoma when she was diagnosed with that at 13. She battled for three years and won that battle, and she is also, she's a Rankin County, a proud Rankin County resident. And she won that battle and just turned 21, and is doing the things that 21-year-olds should be doing. Also was inspired by my father's journey, who passed away in 2018 by Alzheimer's. And their journeys were very different, but both could benefit from mitigation of suffering. And so that is in large part why I'm here in front of you today and what brought my vision about. Again, as you all know, I don't want to belabor a point, but it is a medicinal program, so obviously I want to attempt to make that clear, that it's a medicinal program. Our dispensary would, of course, produce and distribute quality, safe, effective medicinal products. We would, we would, as far as our dispensary goes, I guess, let me just say, the only people, from a security standpoint, obviously security is important, we have policies and procedures that prohibit and prevent diversion. We can share with the board if, should you want to see those policies. We have lots of SOPs and protocols and policies that we shared with the state. We are licensed at that location. As far as people on the property, and I think some of this was just discussed in the hearing before ours, but the only people on the property will be people who are employed and have work permits through the state, which requires backgrounds and things of that nature, or people with cards, or people with caregiver cards that are caregiving for people. So it is not open to the public. And so as it relates to odor, I think that was talked about, our, our business is obviously different than cultivation, and obviously that, odor is odor. I would submit to you that we don't have the opportunity for odor nuisance that a cultivation does. We do have a cultivation, it's in the Jackson Industrial Park, so on that, so we, I do understand odor. But as it relates to the dispensary, so there's really not a huge opportunity for odor in that whatever products we buy from a cultivation, so for example, we, we get our own supply from our own cultivation facility, and we buy that in an MMC EU, which is a Mississippi Medical Marijuana Equivalency Unit, which is also an APE. And so if we buy that in those packages, we then have to, we cannot open it. You cannot open it. You cannot repackage it. You can't smell it. You can't look, you can't do anything with it. You cannot open the package. You simply turn around and you sell that same package. So there's not the opportunity that, number one, that prevents, that is one step in preventing diversion. It is also a step in odor mitigation. And so that, that, just an example, as a backup plan, we are happy to submit an odor mitigation plan, which I would, based on the last hearing, I would probably assume that you will require from us, and we are happy to do that. Of course, signage, we would abide by all of the recommendations by the state, as well as the county, on our signage, on whatever, whatever we would need to do in that regard. We would, of course, in addition to, to complying with everything that the county asked of us or required of us, and the state is required of us, in addition to that, we would, as a, as a, as a rule, we would, we would never, again, do, do want to put out anything that felt offensive to families or inappropriate, or tacky, or whatever the word you wanna call it, that, that was attractive to children, anything like that. And so I just, I want to, I know I've said it, but I just want to bring that home really strongly. And of course, we would abide by all the regulations and prohibitions of advertising. So as you probably know, the state doesn't allow us to advertise anyway. We can sponsor educational events, but we cannot advertise. And so we would not be advertising in Rankin County because we can't advertise anywhere. We would very much want to be a good neighbor to the community and to contribute to economic gain in the Rankin County area. And I think I mentioned, we have been licensed there.
What's your hours of operations?
So we would, honestly, we would say, we were deferring to the county on that. We are prepared to operate from anything from nine o'clock in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning, to five, six, or seven, however that works out. We're really looking to the county to see what you would require of us, or what would you prefer.
There's no regulations in the state. They didn't have anything.
Not that I'm aware of. I would certainly...
They defer to the...
County, okay. All right.
I, I am happy to answer any questions that you have. If there's nothing, if there's something I haven't covered, I'm happy to cover it from an operational standpoint.
Security plan? Can you address with the board, like, video surveillance, the potential for picking up tags and that type of thing, and cooperation with law enforcement?
It's that White House, been for sale forever. It's beside that storage place, close to Spillway, closer to Spillway. It's in between that boat place and the storage place.
Does it back up to River Chase?
Yeah.
Backs up to River Chase?
It's behind it, yeah.
How close is it?
Through the woods there. It's probably...
How far?
It's, it's far enough to be outside the prohibited regulating, regulation distance.
All right. So there's a regulation, I know, I don't know the numbers, the regulations that the state put out from schools and churches and those things.
Yes, that's correct.
So what was it, what was that number? Do you remember?
I, I think it's a thousand feet at the state level, Daniel. You guys, when y'all set your, your contingencies and boundary, you chose not to regulate as it relates to residential.
Right.
So there's no prohibition from, on a distance standpoint. Spence, correct me if I'm wrong, there's not a state-level prohibition.
And I guess, I guess that was kinda, I know we had discussions on the zoning and all. One of my big points was...
Proximity to residential.
Correct. But because this is not an economic area, the reservoir's not. I mean, I get it that there's businesses in there, but it's a bedroom community, where people go raise their families and their kids and their... We don't want industry at the reservoir, right? Or neighborhoods. We've got 200 HOAs that cover that vast area. So the economic growth doesn't really move my needle from that same point. But my issue is the proximity to neighborhoods and subdivisions. That's what I don't like. And that's, that's my issue. I know people can go wherever you want to in Mississippi and get it, they can go in Rankin County and get it. I know you said there's not a dispensary yet in Rankin County, but I'm sure... Brad, what's the other areas that's got, that have dispensaries?
Richlands, got one or two. It's going up Pearl, I think it's gonna have...
So there's places in Rankin County to go get it in cities, right?
And PRV is likely, likely, likely to have dispensaries.
So my question is, the location of this one, the distance between that and River Chase in the back is what?
I don't know. I really don't.
I mean, I know we didn't put a distance in there, but...
Do you remember, Renee?
Can we...
Yeah, we, we...
Do y'all have a picture of where it's gonna be? I mean...
I think it's 1170 Old Fannin. See? That's it, right there. And there's...
The vape shop or across the street? Oh, I got you, I got you, I got you, I got you. So is it on the south side or north side of the boat place?
It would be the south.
South side?
Yeah.
So it's closer to the subdivision than further away? South side? Yeah, you're right. If it's south, it is, yeah, okay. And I guess, I guess that's my big... A couple of things that, one, hit me is, is the proximity to residential neighborhoods, where our kids and all play and everything else. Second issue is, does that do anything to value of homes? Obviously, that's important to the people that are out there, having a dispensary within a thousand feet of their backyard patio, right? So those are, and my district's across the street from, it's not my district where you're at, so I'm on the other side of the road, but still, it's the same people that travel up and down the site. And that's, that's my issue, is just the location by the subdivision.
May I, may I...
Sure.
Just, just as we, as we're discussing it, so I, first and foremost, I certainly appreciate your position, of course. As it relates to it being a, closer to a residential area than obviously what, what you would prefer, I think that, well, I know that, you know, when we talk about a dispensary, I know that there are various dispensaries and sort of, people get a different sort of concept in their head or vision in their head about what that really is and what it looks like and what it does to the community. And, and that may be the case in, in another state, in a recreational program, or maybe, you know, I, I say New Orleans because everybody thinks of New Orleans as sort of a party place. I don't really even go to New Orleans, but that's what I think of, you know? I'm thinking, I, I can assure this board that what we want is, is a, it, it would be akin to a, to a, to a pharmacy, to a medical clinic. It is, it is not, we have no, it, it wouldn't be, you know, I, I certainly, I don't wanna, I hate to even put this out there, but it's not gonna be like, you know, flashy, you know, uh...
Neon lights.
You know, it's just neon or, you know...
And it didn't really matter, because people know where, I mean, you know, I mean, the...
Yes, sir.
The, the talk circle. Have y'all, have you spoken to the HOA in River Chase that backs up to it?
I have not spoken to them.
Okay.
And I would also add that it is, it is on four acres, and so it is off the road to some extent. And, but I just, I, I wanna, and I, I, again, I understand your concern, excuse me, and appreciate it. I just, I, I wanna make sure that I communicate that while we wouldn't, can't hide that it's a medical marijuana, medical marijuana dispensary, and we wouldn't wanna do that, at the same time, we, we, we just wanna make sure that everybody's clear, and we, we don't wanna do anything that lowers property values. We only want to contribute to property values. We want to contribute to being a good neighbor. We want to have a safe, secure place for people to come and get a medicinal quality product. And really, and that, nothing more, nothing less. I mean, it's just no intention or, and, and certainly not thoughtless. Like, it, it does matter to us. It's not like, oh, it's great if we can be a great... It does, it absolutely matters to us.
Kelly, you said that you were gonna do some remodeling. What is your security as far as fencing goes and behind you, and also your lighting? You know, I would like to contain, if there is any lights, gonna be there to make sure you keep it within your property boundaries. But I would like to see some type of buffering.
Yes, sir.
Additional buffering, other than the woods that are there, because you can't see the houses from where your property is, so... But it would be nice to have some type of fence up there. But there's a lot of fences I don't know there.
What type of fence are you talking about?
I would think a wood fence.
Like a wood, eight-foot picket fence or something?
Or six-foot, yeah.
Jay, you're thinking both from a, from a sight standpoint, being able to see into Ms. Williams' property? So there would be some sort of impediment there, but also for security?
Walk up the back door.
Security as well. So it's really more about security, it sounds like, because you've got some, some adequate vegetative buffering between this location and the adjoining residential properties, right? Okay. So you, you understand, Ms. Williams, that it would maintain the vegetative buffering? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and pencil that in as one additional consideration. Maintain all vegetative buffering that is currently existing on the property? And then also the inclusion of a fence requirement for a security, for security reasons. Jay, do you feel strongly about the kind of fence?
I think a wood fence would be...
Okay.
More attractive.
Yes. Six-foot?
Yeah.
Standard?
I think that's our regulation, isn't it?
Yeah, well...
Or can you go to eight?
We can go up to eight.
Eight's even better.
Okay.
Because we still, we still got that signage stuff, you know, for the overlay district. I mean, so the overlay district has, I'm sure you've read all those different signage issues and stuff like that, so it's...
What I would intend to do this morning, we've got two matters as it relates to this particular application. You've gotta rezone one, okay? So we, we need to take that matter up, and I, I think you've heard information related to the rezoning request. And then we're gonna take up the conditional use application, okay? So, Ms. Williams, do you have anything else you wanna add at this point?
The only thing...
I think we, I think I asked about your security plan?
You did. I was just gonna, I was gonna add a little bit to that. So we have, we do have a security plan, obviously, and we do have a security system. It's, it's obviously cameras. They are very, the system is, is very sophisticated. Not only do we have cameras, each camera itself stores all the data for 120 days. In addition to that, it is backed up on a cloud-based indefinitely. These cameras can pick out anything. If I wanna go back and say, if I wanna go into the system and say, who was on the property on August 8th, six months ago, with a red shirt on? It will bring up everybody who came in with a red shirt on, and we can start down by that. So it can get license plates, it can get anything, it can get somebody who is trying to, for example, if we had an employee who somehow, even though you can't open a package, but let's just say that you have, in, in some states, they have a diversion issue when people are repackaging, and they stick things in their, in their, in their sleeves or in their pockets. These cameras can zone in to precisely the smallest point and bring it back up and save it. So we have a great security system. We, of course, will have security personnel, and we will have security barriers, fencing, whatever. And we have a security plan that we can certainly present to the board, should, should you want to see that as well.
Okay. Any, any other questions, Ms. Williams, before we take up the rezoning request?
Mr. Flagard, do you have anything else that you wanna add at this point? Gentlemen, I think we, we would be well-served to take up the rezoning request. First and foremost, again, in order to achieve the requisite showing for, for justification for a rezoning, there needs to be a demonstrated need that, that this particular zoning classification is underserved, and then number two, that there's a demonstrated public need for it. And so with this being the very first application that we have received concerning a dispensary, you've got two conditions that are in place already by virtue of your prior votes several months back to indicate that those would be placed. You've made zoning considerations already, and you, and you have indicated that dispensaries must be placed in C3. C3, just as a quick reminder, C3 is a classification that is associated with heavily trafficked corridors. And so this would include corridors where you see a, an abundance of traffic. This particular location is along one of the more busy corridors in Rankin County as it relates to vehicle traffic. That Spillway Road, Old Fannin intersection is a heavily trafficked area, and so should the board decide, choose, believe that, that it is appropriate for commercial properties in and associated with that intersection to be within C3, you would be on solid ground to make that call. That is a judgment call that has to be made by the board. And so the applicant has demonstrated that C3 for this location would be appropriate by virtue of the heavy traffic nature of this area. And the second consideration, the demonstrated public need, it's pretty obvious that with this being the very first one out of the box, that there being no other dispensary located in unincorporated county, that, that, that's a pretty easy showing to make, that there is a demonstrated need. Now, later applications, it may not be quite as clear. When we have other rezoning requests, it may not, not be quite as clear as we have medical cannabis, cannabis dispensaries come online. It may be more and more difficult for subsequent applicants to demonstrate a public need at that point, but at this point in time, there is not an, a dispensary that, that we could point to as meeting a public need. Okay? So at this time, Mr. President, I will leave it to the board to decide whether or not President, I will leave it to the board to decide whether or not the requisite showing concerning a rezoning request has been made and it will be up to the board to entertain a motion to rezone the property.
Do I have a motion for the rezoning?
Most approved.
Second, by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I propose.
The record reflect. One, Mr. Cross.
That takes care of the rezoning, gentlemen. Now we will move to the conditional use application, which is, it's coupled with the rezoning request. The rezoning was a precondition to moving forward on conditions. In other words, if you guys had voted not to rezone, there would be no need to entertain a discussion about conditions. Because you've chosen to rezone the property now to C-3, it's appropriate to take up the conditions. I want to say this, I think this is a way to short-circuit the process. All of the conditions that you heard as it related to the grower facility that preceded this consideration will be included. I do want to point out the modifications that your staff would make to those conditions. I am going to impose on Ms. Williams to provide an odor mitigation plan, even though it sounds to me like the plan will be, we will, we will not create odors. I think that's probably going to be the mitigation plan. But nonetheless, I would like to keep that consistent and ask that we have an odor mitigation plan submitted to the Office of Community Development at the appropriate time. All of the signage restrictions that we referred to in the grower consideration, we are including here, okay? So those will be the same. And by the way, most of those, again, we're indebted to CNPDD for helping us with this, but most of these are contained within the state regulations. And so we're just simply tracking along with those. I do want to point out that we have a signed ordinance that is applicable to the reservoir community district, and if I'm not mistaken, this property will fall into the RCD. And so I would encourage the applicant to familiarize herself with our RCD signage regulations and just be sure that we don't run afoul of that. That's an extra layer of reg, signed reg on top of our normal unincorporated county sign regulation. So familiarize yourself with that and Ms. Lawrence will be able to provide you with that information. Hours of operation, gentlemen, I think we do want to spend a little bit of time here. Number one, state law prohibits dispensaries from being open on Sunday, so that won't happen regardless. We would propose a Monday through Saturday, but we're open to the board's thought process about the hours of operation. Just to get us going, it seems appropriate to me to set our hours of operation at 9:00 a.m. in the morning and possibly give folks time after work to be able to access this facility, and so I would say nine to seven. And that would be Monday through Saturday. And I think that would probably encompass, it would, it would provide that the facility would be able to meaningfully serve the community with the product. If you guys have other ideas about that, I would say let's, let's talk about that now.
I like the idea of six better.
Nine to six?
And where time gets dark early and so you're already an hour after dark, so I think six is.
Nine to six?
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion on that, guys, or any concerns about that? I would, I would suggest then nine to six would be our hours of operation that would go into this particular condition.
I may add, Mr. King, I have something relevant to add to the conversation, if it's okay. I'm not sure.
Gentlemen, are you open to some additional discussion on the point?
Sure.
I am, yes.
Sure, I'm Chad King. I live at 615 Forest View Lane in Brandon. And I am the COO of Kelly's Green and the Rankin County resident. So as we were talking, I got to thinking, so our regulations not only provide for what we have to have as far as security, they only allow a certain window of when a dispensary may receive product. And so that window of time stops, I think, at nine o'clock. So I just wanted you to know, as we're talking about hours of operation, they are very specific on when a transport company can come and deliver. And so I know when I had talked to Ms. Renee about that, we had sort of gone through that, because I said, we won't have any eighteen-wheelers coming at 1170 Old Fannin Road, it will just be vans and things like that. So I just want to make sure if we need to put a condition on there, like except for state-regulated deliveries that are allowed under the regulations, I wanted to make sure about that. And I also wanted to, so we can just make that as like an exception, if that's okay.
Yes, sure.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Everybody understand the issue there? So when we said hours of operation, again, we're really thinking more in terms of a retail establishment, we're talking about customers, in this case, cardholders. And so my suggestion would be that we make it clear, and I think to Mr. King's point, it is appropriate to do this clearly on the front end, since this is our first one, that accepted from that quote, hours of operation restriction would be the receipt of deliveries. So the facility will no longer be open for cardholders at 9:00 p.m. However, the facility itself, through its employees, can receive deliveries of product at any point in time, subject to the state's regulation. Is everybody okay with that? We'll clarify that in the conditions and make it clear that when we say hours of operation, we are restricting that to cardholder access.
Okay.
All right. Lighting has been discussed, gentlemen. The security plans, Ms. Williams walked you through kind of what their security plan is. I would only add to that, that we would expect them, and I know they would be willing to, to be in very close communication with law enforcement, and that is so that we don't have any gap between issues that may arise at the facility and the notification of law enforcement, if it's appropriate to do so, and that we have good, close communication there. I would stress this point, I want to, this has been something that the board has expressed concern over from day one, and that is this idea of loitering around the facility. I want to stress to the applicant that we would demand that there be no outside seating of any kind, no ability for the public at large to simply be on the property and hanging around. We do not want that, we don't want that visual, and so we would want to stress and make a condition that the applicant will do everything that they possibly can to prevent that from happening, all right? The next condition which came up in the discussion is that we would require the maintaining of the vegetative buffer that is currently on the property and is simply will remain there. And that vegetative buffer is, provides a site buffer between adjacent residential property and this location. And so we would require that that vegetative buffer be maintained. And to Jay's point, we would require the applicant to install an eight-foot wood fence along the property boundary of this property that adjoins residential property. So gentlemen, those would be the conditions that the staff would recommend and we'll make that a part of this record. If you have no further questions of the applicant or discussion amongst yourselves, well, you're going to discuss it after the motion. We would require a motion to.
I have a question.
Okay.
About the signage. Do you have in mind what you want to put on the building?
We, you know, we have, we have in mind, we haven't, you know, we've left those things sort of to defer to specific county and municipality requirements to where we are. I mean, we have a, you know, it would be something, I think, obviously wouldn't have anything that suggested it was a cannabis place or a medical marijuana. So to answer your question, yes, absolutely. We have various logos that have, don't have cannabis leaves or anything like that in them. We have five or six, you know, Kelly's Green symbols or logos that don't have anything that would suggest that it's a cannabis or a medical marijuana.
Mr. Bishop, if I could suggest that one of the conditions be that the applicant submits the proposed sign logo, if we can, if we can do that. And Ms. Williams, if you will submit that to Ms. Lawrence, so we can include it as a part of the package here, she will get the information to the guys so that they can see it. And I think at that point, Mr. Bishop, do we want to have, to retain some sort of veto authority over that? In other words, if you guys aren't happy about that and you want to propose suggestions or changes.
We need to approve a sign before you can vote.
Yeah, I think that's, that needs to be a part of the condition. If that's acceptable to the applicant, then we would make that a part of the conditions as well.
Yes, sir.
All right. That's it.
Okay.
All right, do I have a motion?
Most approved.
No, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? Not all in favor say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
All right. The record reflect, one nay, but.
That public hearing is closed, gentlemen. I want to thank the applicant and thank you guys for helping us today. Again, I want to say thank you today, you're great for being so helpful to us, front and center, always responsive, and I know I speak on behalf of Ms. Lawrence when I tell you that we really appreciate their help on this. Mr. President, with your permission, we'll move to the next item under my section. Gentlemen, item J on your agenda is an authorization for myself to execute all documents that are associated with the county's participation in the State of Mississippi's court-ordered resolution of all claims that are being made on behalf of the State of Mississippi and on behalf of all political subdivisions of the state against multiple companies that are involved in the opioid manufacturing and distribution litigation. You guys will recall that we have received from three separate defendants in the multi-state litigation that's being overseen by our Attorney General's Office. We've received three settlement distributions with three different of the opioid manufacturing defendants. There has now been resolutions with an additional six of the opioid manufacturing or distribution defendants. Among them, an organization called Teva, Walgreens, CBS, Walmart, these are the types of defendants that are involved in that litigation, and they have reached settlements with the group of state attorneys general. And Rankin County gets to participate in that and receive settlement distributions. You're authorizing me to execute the required resolution documents on your behalf so that we can begin receiving settlement distributions from these defendants. That's what I'm asking for.
Most approved.
Second. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any more discussion on this? Not all in favor say aye. All opposed like aye. Motion carried.
Mr. President, item K is a consideration of a potential action to adopt a non-binding, I want to stop and repeat that, a non-binding resolution of support of Trustmark Park and the securing of a long-term lease arrangement with the ownership of the Atlanta Braves AA franchise. This would be for economic development and tourism purposes. The resolution would simply indicate your support of a long-term lease arrangement being put together to maintain the AA franchise, Atlanta Braves organization at Trustmark Park. And so that's, that's what I would ask, and we need a motion to authorize the execution of, of the resolution.
We're going to talk about it.
I'm making a motion to.
Bishop got me distracted, sorry about that.
Second. Our second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion on this? Not all in favor say aye. All opposed like aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Keith.
Good morning. Item A is our annual requirement that we execute a continuing disclosure engagement letter, and we're asking for your approval to do that. And this is for disclosures on our outstanding general bond obligations, and we usually use Butler Snow for this process. We just need to get it in motion.
Most approved.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Bishop. Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye. All opposed like aye. Motion carried.
All right. Item B is acknowledgement of receipt of, we received 2016 homestead applications and 116 amended homestead applications from the Texas District's Office to the Chancery Clerks for the month of July 2023, and that's just to acknowledge receipt of those.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye. All opposed like aye.
And item C is authority to contract with Delta to provide uploading for our annual requirement, reporting requirements for our 1095 forms and authority to issue the check for that.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye. All opposed like aye. Motion carried. Additional business.
I do have one item of additional business. Each of you should have a handout. It was an email received from the city of Brandon. They're requesting the county provide a pathway through the middle of our property at EOC. If you'll take a moment and review that.
So who gave them that easement they're showing? How did they attain that easement?
The easement, there is no easement for the current path, that's what they're asking for.
The one they say that's existing?
The existing one was granted by Rankin First.
When?
I don't have the history on that. We're currently in the process that, this is currently partly Rankin County's property, partly Rankin First property. We're in the process, we've had it surveyed, we're drawing up documents to transfer this entire parcel, or parcels currently, that EOC resides on and turn it all into Rankin County property, because right now it's split up.
But even with the existing route, it's cutting right beside our building there.
It is. And that, that is an existing easement that has been granted.
Yep. We don't know when.
I don't have a date on that.
I guess that's, can they, can they grant an existing easement, Rankin First, without coming to us, or can they just do that?
Yes, sir. Since it's titled in Rankin County Economic Development Authority, any of the property that's titled in the EDA can act through their board, Daniel, to divide out an interest in properties subject to their control.
But, and the question they're coming here is just going to cut across us and run right there to the north end of his parking lot, Word's parking lot, right?
Yes, sir.
I mean, the proposed area now, why can't they come up there where the 15-foot non-exclusive permanent easement, and just come down that?
It's probably not wide enough, Brad, that would be my guess.
It says 15-foot.
Well, the diagram, the way I read it, it looks like they want to also utilize the existing parking lot for the public to park and walk the trails and park their bikes.
So I guess, I guess that's kind of my question, if they're going to fill up our parking lot, I mean, if you're going somewhere to get on the trail, you got to park somewhere, and then that ties up Word's spot.
Well, I'm thinking they talking over here.
Extension offices also.
Correct.
It really affects them probably more, the extension.
They're saying it's easy to come in off Marquette, turn in the parking lot right there and park your vehicle to go get onto the trail. I mean.
I wish they'd just cut that whole section out right there, the, and just leave it from there and don't even include our property.
You're on the red side.
Is where their proposed route, where they would like to, I guess, add on maybe? But I don't guess we have much of a choice, huh?
Hey, Word, does this do anything with your operation of your building?
It scares me dead.
Tell me why.
Well, you got a couple of reasons. Number one, you got your, I think they're, what they're attempting to do is an ex officio trailhead that is actually taking up parking spots, which providing access to our building and the Mississippi State Extension. But more especially, what gets me is the potential parking and blocking in of that top shop building right there, which you have millions of dollars of assets that we may need at a moment's notice, won't be able to get them out because people are parking trucks and pulling out bicycles and things of this nature.
You tell me, if they were parking up there with that store. Shop area?
At the top shop, yes.
Because there is no parking for this place, other than I guess that, that gravel pit where you go into the.
If you'll, if you'll notice right here on your, on your diagram, right to the right of that little white car, they're taking up what appears to me to be a minimum of two parking spaces to make an access, what I've been told to give the public access to the master gardener's garden. But if you'll look right here, there's a six-foot wide sidewalk that moves directly to the master gardener's, but neither here nor there.
Have we talked to the gardener?
I have not, but you do have Heather here with Mississippi State that coordinates your 4H stuff.
Would you, would you mind, I hate to call you up here.
I think, I think she could add a little, a little insight as well. And I will tell you this, I have went in and retrofitted all of our lighting at the, at the EOC, just to brighten it up. When this trailhead come through and just, it would blow your mind at the amount of people that even after dark are still walking through that trailhead. I've actually had employees, and she can allude to it as well, that they have too, that were there by themselves that literally did not, wouldn't even walk out of the building until these folks left. Just, it is what it is, so.
Sorry, sorry to pull you up.
That's okay, that's okay. Good morning. Yeah, we do have some concerns, we do have 4H kids. I guess our main thing is security, because we do have almost 1,000 4H kids, minor kids that use that building. That parking lot is not real big. The lighting would be an issue, and we have a lot of groups that. And we have a lot of groups that meet at night, the Forestry Association, the Cattlemen's Association, some of our sewing clubs. They do meet there. The master gardeners meet there. There's constantly people working up in the garden all hours of the day. So it is a concern for us. We do have a lot of soil samples and a lot of traffic go through that facility every day on our side and then also on Mike's side as well. Parking lot, taking two additional parking spaces is key. There's a lot of times that parking lot is full from not only us, but other people coming in to do soil samples and tend the daily extension business. This is Ms. Jane Allison, one of our master gardeners, and she can speak on the garden.
Well, I was just, I was told just the other day about this. And I have seen the marking and it does come right through what we call our hill garden, which is a garden that we've been caping up for probably 25 years. And we do have a lot of equipment, well, tools and things. And of course, I'm sure people are going to take it, that that's their garden too, that, you know, they're going to probably pick all over our plants. We do, and there are a lot of times that we are there and we are concerned about parking too. And we're concerned about the security because we are there all hours and we are there on weekends. We're on there, we meet the second Wednesday of the month. But I'm worried about too, about people, will there be extra lighting there for the people that are walking on this trail? Because it's pretty dark, it's pretty dark out there. We're right in the edge of the woods and they're going to be coming right through the woods. So we are concerned about the security of this also.
Thank you.
This is the first we've heard about it, really.
Mayor Budges, he texted me earlier this morning wanting to sit down and talk about it. And I mean, I don't...
There's also some redirection of a, I'm going to call it a pretty significant swell. According to their markings that they got in there, if you'll go down there and look, you'll see too, they're clearly marked beginning of pipe. And then probably 75 feet away, it's clearly marked end of pipe. And I'm curious as to what, I don't know, when we get a rain, it's a pretty significant water flood. But the, I'll show you right here, the pipe starts right here and it dumps out right there. I don't know where he's redirecting that water to, if he's talking about going into a catch basin. There's nothing that alludes, according to his survey statistics, that alludes to a catch basin. I don't know if that's going to overshoot, I don't know. This is first I've heard of it too. So other than saying I'm out there stating that.
I'd just like to do a little research in it before I move any process. That's my thought.
So they have an existing 15-foot easement that's a permanent easement. That you see where that runs along the border of the property, along the interstate right away. I'm assuming that's interstate right away. That's probably a safe guess.
And that's their easement, right?
Yes. They already have a 15-foot easement to access back to what appears to be the top shop drive. You see that? Okay. And so the need for additional access, I'm not sure. I'm not sure, need. It may not be preferred to use the existing easement because it doesn't fit well within the city's plan as it relates to this trail system. But they do have, they do have access that they can utilize. And so I just wanted to point that out. There will be some challenges as it relates to the existing easement. You see, that's a, what is that, about 170-degree turn there? 150-degree turn at that angle there. That's a pretty substantial angle to try to make that jog back to the exit point, which would be the top shop drive. I think we would be well-served to secure the top shop property. If the city chose to use the existing easement, we're going to want to make sure that we adequately fence the top shop and anything that's bordering on what would be a trail that's installed within the existing 15-foot easement.
I just can't believe they intend to have people walk up and down the main road.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Mr. Bishop?
I think they're going to...
Yes.
All right. If you, if you go down there and look, you'll see those are marked center lines. And what I understand, that's like a 10-foot path. And there'll be, what appears to me, I'm not an engineer, probably two to three-foot buffer of grass or shoulder. And then you're going to have this bike lane or walking path, whatever it is, that goes from our office all the way to the amphitheater. And it's going through every, the center line stakes of the path is what it's marked, goes through the center of every single drain inlet, every single entrance, all the way down Marquette Road. So obviously it's a significant federal movement.
So it would, they are wanting to divert this trail to skew it more in a northward direction away from Marquette. So that it, apparently so that there is less entanglement with those two drives, the one that goes into EOC and the one that goes into top shop. They're trying to avoid one of those intersections, it looks like. So really what the board has got to wrestle with is, in addition to the 15-foot easement that they already have, should we accommodate a request for yet more access that goes right through the middle of the EOC property? At a minimum, gentlemen, if the decision is made to accommodate the city's request, I would encourage you strongly to request that the city release and tender back the current 15-foot easement that they have. That would be an appropriate exchange. That is correct. Release the easement that they already have. And that's only if the board chooses to move forward to accommodate the city's request.
How would that affect what they were saying? Sorry. How would that affect what they were saying?
Oh, no, that's just if the board chooses. They've stated well what their concerns are with the proposed access, okay? I don't have anything to add to that.
Well, we're not here to take action.
No, this is just the first I've seen it really looked at.
Hey, oh no. All right. Any other questions on this?
Not on that. I had one more thing additional, whenever you get to it.
Hey, we getting a lot of work orders sent in and it's like this every year. And I mean, I think we need to get some subcontractors or whatever because we got a lot of culvert stopped up and there's just so much that our road department can do in a day's time. Unstopping and reach out to some of these subs and see if they're willing to come on. And I mean, it's not like that all during the summer, but this time of the year, after all the leaves and all the rain we've been getting. And I mean, I think we getting, how many a day, work orders you getting a day, Mike? A day? And we got three, you got three crews working on ditches? I mean, I don't see how, would they stay caught up?
How would you pick who you're going to use, such kind of thing? This guy, you know, you got a lot of, a lot of them, how you going to kind of say?
I think you could reach out to them and, I don't know how you would even price out a culvert job. I mean, I don't know.
Oh, you got so many, so many out there.
I don't believe this is going to fall into a professional services category, Miss Catherine, which would require us to come up with some mechanism, more than likely like an RFP process, where we would receive proposals from these vendors to provide the services. And then we would enter into some type of short-term contract that could be structured so that there is a listing, so to speak, of qualified vendors. And then we just simply rotate them through the purchase order process. But I think you're going to be required to set up an RFP that can be responded to. We can't just call them up and say, hey, we're going to issue a PO. This is not going to fall into an exempt category.
Okay.
Great. I reckon our thought was, Brad asked me this other day, was, you know, we would come up with a unit price on ditch cleaning, culvert replacement.
Yes.
We would furnish, we would furnish a travel.
Yes.
So we'd be always talking about labor.
Yes, sir.
And our equipment.
Would we be considering doing this, Mike, as part of our commodity bid process?
We'd either do it that way, you know, I did know that we had had a chance to do RFP on it.
Yeah.
Since it was labor material.
Right. So we could do a commodity bid type of process. Of course, you know, you guys know that's going to take a little bit of time to do that. I'm guessing, is Ms. Bridget here? I don't think Ms. Bridget's here. So I have to defer Ms. Bridget on our time.
Well, I'm just, I'm not saying we got to do anything today, but I think we need to do, be finding, figuring out something to...
I don't think we're going to be able to have a generic, you know, here replace this culvert. I think there's always going to be some extras needed as we go through this, but...
It's different. Big culverts, really, they're going to be different.
Where either, hey, we clean my ditch over here too, right here, as I'm sure they do while we're out there working.
Yeah.
That would be the only hiccup day was, you know, just like we go out there and free serve everybody the job. And we'd say, I need to clean 100-foot out right here. And the electric comes out and says, well, I need Mike to clean it out. That would be a little 50-foot you would need to add to some, little bit of stuff to it. I mean, I think you could unit system this to where it would work as a unit system, I mean, a unit price is what I'm thinking you could do it at. But I think you don't have to have a ditch in unit price. Then just say, somebody calls and says you got to move a crew from Pisgah to Brandon, then you would have to have an hourly price. I would think that would take that from, right then, he would go to an hourly price.
Mobilization.
Mobilization. But I mean, he would just have an hourly price while you move. Just like you had horse mare on, he was on the crew you could move. And he was at Pisgah and he comes to Brandon, he would just go to an hourly price. You would have an hourly price locked in for that contract, Chris. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. I think we could put together a commodity bid. Now, whether it covers everything?
I just know we getting overwhelmed with calls from people saying my ditch stopped up, culvert stopped up, leaves need. And I mean, it's just so much you can get done in a day or a week.
Well, we've had a lot of that, whether it really keeps them out from being out like they should.
But every year, about this time of the year, that's, everything is hitting. And I mean, I was just thinking, having somebody on some other subcontractors or whatever to have.
I'm not against it, but I think that there's a lot of uncertainty. I mean, this guy can get hurt and he's a contractor, or he can hurt somebody, or he can tear up something. And I don't know that this is going to go away. I like to compare us putting a crew in the north, a crew in the south that does nothing but work orders. And not that the ones you have are going to quit, but maybe if you could ever get caught up. We've got the equipment and I don't know. Just compare the contract stuff with us manning it.
Yeah, we're just lumbering up and said, I want to keep on this and we're just lumbering together versus the law, versus the contract.
I apologize for being the lawyer. Throw it, throw it in the kitchen.
It's just, we got to, we got to come up with some type of system.
But yes, they, they, they're not contractors. They have to have, they have to have give a fair deal. They don't have so much insurance coverage on. You know, the problem. That's leave to me.
Hey, the only thing I had, I know we brought it up earlier and I, I'm going, this is going to be well off the face of it, but I wanted to see if I could get Caroline to come up and talk about Mr. Ledbetter's issue. I know I hadn't, it kind of got moving and we kind of got going through the process. And I know he brought you up into it and you had an update maybe for us. Just, I was trying to understand it too, it's the first I'd heard of it, so.
Yeah, I just want to...
Maybe you can get some feedback to it while we had you in here. I know you had slipped that.
Yes. So Mr. Ledbetter received these toll notices beginning in August, I think, of '22. In late October, early November of '22, he brought them to our office. Each of these toll letters has a dispute option on the back of these letters. No disputes had been made by Mr. Ledbetter up until November, at which point our office took it over and we started disputing it. The entity is in New Jersey, some affiliation with New York, but mostly New Jersey. What we have done, we have sent emails, we have done hard copy letters. I log in two to three times a week under an account on behalf of Mr. Ledbetter to dispute anything that's out there. I actually have, we initially, immediately worked with the Sheriff's Department to get them involved. They have worked with some of the local state agencies up there. So I want to make that really clear, that the Sheriff's Department has done exactly what they need to do. We have tons of communication back and forth with this toll agency. I have written confirmation, Craig has written confirmation, Keith has written confirmation, that this has been handled. We have worked diligently on resolving this issue. The other interesting fact that we cannot get to the bottom of, through our local law enforcement, their local law enforcement, the toll agencies and our state agency, what system they're actually pulling this information in. As you all know, most law enforcement agencies run vehicles through NCIC. NCIC does not reflect this car tag at all. It's gone. It's not Mr. Ledbetter's. It does not have his information attached to it. There is nothing assigned to him in NCIC.
How are they sending him?
That's what we cannot get to the bottom of. We have spoken to another state who does the toll in the same manner. They are not in the same system. We know what that state uses, but it does not mean that it's what New Jersey is using. We just can't, we can't figure it out. We have spoken with both our Attorney General's Office and the New Jersey Attorney General's Office to make sure that this isn't some scam, because we have seen those come through also. We do not feel this is a scam. We have not gotten confirmation that this is not a duplicated tag. There's, we keep, we hit a brick wall a lot. But I just want to make it really, really, really clear that there are a lot of us that have spent numerous hours on this. Another interesting fact is their call volume, there is no way to get a person on the phone other than to sit on hold. I personally have sat on hold until seven o'clock at night, many nights. And I have tried to call at seven o'clock in the morning when they open many mornings to try to get someone on the phone so that you can get a warm body to see what you can get done. Everything that we've gotten accomplished has been electronic. There is no person that you get in touch with.
All right. Caroline, is, I mean, with what they sending him, is this going to impact his credit or anything like that?
No. We have said, they're all the way in the works.
So he can take this letter and just drop it in the garbage can every time one comes in and don't pay it no more money?
Yes.
Caroline, is this a common thing? I mean, do you have it?
No, this is, this is the...
It's uncommon. I mean, this is a freak thing. I don't know if it's something that you've heard of or whatever, so.
No, this is a very bizarre, the tag is expired, which first and foremost, the other, it is going through a school zone. It's the same place every time. We have asked, you know, you know where the car is, you know what time it's going through there, pull it over. They can't, I mean, we've got nothing. So as far as we are concerned on our end, this is 100% handled. We've done everything we can do. We have confirmation that they have the tag flagged and there is not much more we can do.
I should have asked you earlier and I apologize.
No, you're fine. You're fine.
I was reading some other things and it's the first I'd heard of. I just wanted to give you a chance to speak on it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. But, you know, I'm happy to answer questions, but I feel that we have done...
Well, he shouldn't entertain anything that comes in the mail concerning the tag.
We have said that from day one.
Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, Brad. I wanted to just take you up on that at the beginning.
No, sir. We still in session. We gave the opportunity first.
You've said plenty, you've said plenty, Mr. Ledbetter, including calling everybody in here liars. You thought you were saying that quietly. You said it loud enough for a lot of us to hear that. And I'm tired, I'm tired of your mouth. I would like for you to exit. We've helped you as much as we're going to help you.
Don't even, if they send you something, just throw it away. Don't worry. Don't, if they send you something, just throw it away, don't worry about it, I mean, you're not gonna get in trouble, nothing, they're not gonna impact your credit, just throw it in garbage. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ledbetter.
All right, have a nice day.
Have a good day.
All right, is there a need for executive session?
I think so.
Yes.
I make a motion, just need for executive session?
There's motion, second.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign.
What's it for?
Litigation.
Litigation.
That is?
Yep.
Motion for executive session for litigation?
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign.